... Twenty twenty five, we included molestation of the notices sent to the county's district and the county's director to stall ledger on January eighth, twenty twenty five, was posted in the bulletin board municipal building on January eighth, twenty twenty five, as we made continuously posted and required notices under that statute. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file for some municipal.
By the township code regarding rules of debate, chapter seven dash ninety nine, proceedings of the council shall be governed by law and rules and order. Please silence all cell phones. Proper notice has been given. The township clerk's directive to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting.
Hold on, please.
Mrs. Correa, here. Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mrs. Kennedy, here. Vice President Salish.
Here.
President Vermonde.
Yes.
Ms. Leah.
Here.
Let the record reflect, the following members of the administration are present. Mayor Eric Paul Susan and Administrator Deppen.
Okay. All these time, it knows everybody. All right, we'll do a exclusive display followed by a moment of silence. And in memory of tragic events that took place last week, who would ever imagine on an American college campus with a person executed in front of his family, three thousand college students participating in an open dialogue. And let pray and hope that peace will continue and that the memory of what he stood for will last for a long time.
Thank you.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints won the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, when we go to special presentations, we have a public comments section. Please state and spill your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to one comment, number one in five minutes.
I'm good. Hi, I'm Kim Finnegan. My address is one twenty two West on Road in Lake Pecan. So just a couple of things, I'll come up with that one. I just would like to thank the council and the mayor for all the support that we've been getting for the Camp Jefferson Foundation. I was just up there just now, I don't know, the mayor, Moses, and Morris County was there taking pictures because we're now, Alyssa, they are looking at us to redo ten buildings in the township. So they were there taking pictures and doing all these things. And again, this all started with a little thing, right? And now it's become such a big one. The camp is starting to look great. The people are looking wonderful. It's just a great, wonderful thing. So the builders in town who have been helping us and making it wonderful, I just want to, you know, thank you publicly for all that you've been doing. And I'll come back with the other stuff there.
Thank you.
Dr. Mike Kurzman, Yacht Club Drive. I've got two topics. The first topic is a notice under Jim this evening in ordinance to first meeting for no parking on Yacht Club Drive, on one side to Collins Avenue, on the other side to Alpine Drive. You know, parking is like squeezing a balloon. You know, you tell people they can't park one place, they're going to park the next place. So what I found particularly, what I think it could be helpful, is that if one looks at the street, Yacht Club Drive, at that end, the north side is actually someone's backyard for much of the distance until the very last home that finally has a front yard. There is a triangle that would have a front yard, you know, so to speak. So to make it no parking all along someone's backyard already because of these temporary signs, has pushed all the parking to the residential area. So, you know, you're making it no parking, but now you're just pushing it from people's backyards to people's front yards. And, you know, about a week or two ago, two weeks ago, one of the nights about two in the morning, the people who were parked in front of my house are blasting their music for half an hour. And I didn't call anybody about it. I didn't go outside. I figured eventually this would leak, which they did. But I think it's just important that we consider, you know, that we shouldn't just make something no parking right there at Charlie's. You know, obviously you don't want to have parking right near your intersection. You'll have, you know, your twenty foot distance or whatever the statute's called for. But then it should be no parking. There's somebody who has a rear gate, maybe they need to be able to go out, no parking at the gate. But the rest of it should be that way. And also, what about the people who do live in those areas? Now you're going to stop them from parking in front of their homes? I don't know if they're even aware of this ordinance yet. So I think that's, you know, just something else to consider. And I'm suggesting that you let people park actually close to the restaurant where it's a backyard and then make it, you know, leave it no parking though in the people's front yards if they're so inclined. The next topic is I, you know, I've been living on the lake for forty years. I've been following the biology of it. I was on all the committees for the Lake Pecan Commission. Until I moved to Florida seven years ago, I probably had attended more of those meetings than anyone, including any of the members. Very familiar with the science and a lot of the things that people are worried about. Done a lot of research as well. I provided studies to the commission about how if you just remove the phosphates and don't remove the nitrogen, not only will you increase the amount of use, which the commission said, the scientists said, that's okay, that's good, because we can remove those, but also instead of just having a large bloom, you have smaller blooms, but they're toxic. And I provided the paper from Lake Erie about it. I provided, I think the email I've sent now, provided about ten other papers to talk about this risk. I mentioned it May, I'm sorry, July, I went to the July meeting and I said, hey, watch out for doing this. And the scientist said, oh, don't worry, we focus on nitrogen too. I said, great. But I went back to the September meeting, just last Monday, and I said, hey, I just want to make sure it's clear. What I'm saying is don't do projects that just get rid of the phosphates unless you're watching the nitrogen to phosphate ratio, because that's when you get toxic and you get more toxic even though you have less algae. And there was no response. So imagine how I felt when, and I've read all the minutes of the meetings, by the way, also, but imagine how I felt that then on Friday, I got announcements from the Lake Pecan Foundation that they were doing a large project of two sets of chemicals to destroy the phosphate or lock it down. Then, as I was writing my email, the mayor, you know, was responding to people asking about, what is this large equipment? I mean, this is about a thousand gallon tank. Let's say about a thousand gallons. Don't know if it's filled, but there's a large tank that actually cook. And the mayor posted about it and explained, oh, this is an alum treatment and they're getting rid of it. So if either the mayor or other people on the commission weren't aware of this, you know, they leave it to the experts, but I think it needed discussion with the public and awareness, because a second chemical, you're only supposed to put in after the algae is dead. And when you use alum, it's basically only starving the algae and it could take up a year for it to die. So I don't even understand why they're doing these things. And, you know, it may be a great project. And I know everything you, you know, I really appreciate what you do and I appreciate, that's just my timer. Okay, sorry. I'll come on this up. You know, I appreciate what they're doing and I appreciate what the commission is doing. There's people working very hard. But I think if you're not open about what you're doing, I mean, someone could have said to me, hey, we're about to do exactly what you're worried about next week. And the mayor didn't even know, at least he didn't post it, they've got ten skins of eugizor, another huge chemical that's clay for the bottom and nobody's talking about, does this mean we can't dredge ever? Because now you're putting all of this down there. We're doing boat races this weekend. You think they'd be worried about stirring it up? It just, it just, there's questions. And I just wanted to let you guys know, because I know there's people that are involved with the commission here, and it's not, it's not your priority, but this is the biggest cove in our, in our, in our town, you know, on the lake. And if it's going to be, I mean, people love the way it was the last couple of years. And now they're putting massive chemicals in, shifting the whole biology and very, it just feels that people should be a little cautious, usually environmental things, you need small steps. So, thank you. Thank you.
I remember that, you guys, you guys only decided to be there last week. Were you told that that was going to be there?
The Lake Pecan Commission has a consultant. It's Princeton Dr. Fred Love now. He's been monitoring our lake for at least thirty years that I know of. Very familiar with the chemistry biology of the lake. Everything we do has to be done through the New Jersey DEP. So I have no reason to question it. Mr. Kurzman obviously has a different opinion and I respect that, but we have a consultant. I'm not an expert. I'm not a biologist. I don't have a doctorate degree, you know, so I trust our, our expert on the lake who's been monitoring it, who's been through thick and thin, make the harmful alum bloom, you know, so I simply posted on my social media because I saw people were questioning why there was a tank out there and that wasn't a township project, that it was a Lake Pecan Commission project. And, you know, I'm sorry I got the chemicals wrong, but as far as I know, it's alum. That's all I know. The rest of the family knows, I have no idea what, even what you're talking about. So, again, we have an expert, trust the expert, and I, you know, if the DEP had a problem with what they were putting in the lake, that would have stopped immediately. We work very much in conjunction with the DEP. We have regular meetings with them, with the commissioner of the DEP, the assistant commissioner of the DEP. I mean, we have somebody, the mayor of Hope Pecan, who wanted to put grass eating carp, that's sterile grass eating carp in the lake. And the DEP absolutely didn't want to hear it. So they don't let us do anything in the lake that they're not going to approve. So I appreciate Mr. Kurzman and his opinions and, you know, his background and his concern. But, you know, again, the commission has consultants that tell us what, you know, should be. Oh, we should have posted. Some people should at least be made aware of this because in the climate of the general environment. I didn't get into the scientific detail, I just simply put why there was a tank there. It's a project by, a project by the Lake Pecan Commission.
Okay. Okay. Okay, before we close that, we have no ordinances for this evening. We'll go into the council and mayor discussion. Jessica Baldwin, the county planner.
Good evening. We have three draft ordinances to discuss. The first being the Highlands Primary Components Ordinance. This is a draft that you were provided, and what it essentially does is it overlays Highlands are relations to the planning area, which provides some additional restrictions on development, but to a lesser extent than in the preservation area. For example, residential units, pre-residential units are less or entirely exempt, but Highlands exemptions would continue to apply for things like commercial development. We also have in conjunction, if you remember, with our initial assessment, we are proposing to do some additional studies to create Highland Center designations within the planning area that will totally exempt out areas of the planning area. The ordinance applies the Highlands exemptions to both the planning and preservation area as well, so that would continue to be done through the Township Engineers Office. And this was proposed as part of the planning performance with the Highlands that the township submitted and was approved, I think, the last June. It's also part of our housing element fair share plan, which assisted us in hopefully reducing the amount of total amount of affordable housing that needs to be provided. So it's kind of a two-step process. One is adopting the ordinance and the second is continuing to study and then adopt center designations. We kind of need to move quickly because we need to be in step with the housing element fair share plan in order to be in accordance to deduct essentially lands that can't be developed anyways from our housing plan.
Which is a lot. It's going to be able to highlight all of that, so then we have that corals evidence of, I mean, because what they highlighted, what they think we can build on is absolutely absurd.
Right, and, I mean, yeah.
Just so the audience knows, areas that they think that we can build on in Jefferson is Halsey Island, Raccoon Island, that you can't get to other than having a boat. So they would love for us to have affordable housing on Lake Pecan.
But they are building it.
So, that's so, where everybody understands how meticulous this, this lawsuit and everything is.
So, yeah, so right now, the reason the ordinance is coming first before the center designations is just back in what you're talking about, and then we'll continue to work to put the center designations on. If for some reason this creates an issue and at any time, I mean, this, the township can decide to opt out of this again, that's always at your disposal, so.
Jess, can you explain just a little bit about the center designations and, you know, our discussions of trying to get there? And, you know, I could complain about the Highlands forever, it's, you know, I want to see Jefferson paved over, but it's crushing us financially and economically. And we've been trying to search any way possible to try to get a smart growth areas, whenever we can possibly do, beg, plead to anybody that will listen. And this was a suggestion after meeting with Ben Scannelli, who is the record.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different components. One is the center designation, which would allow for areas to kind of be carved out and proposed for additional growth in the commercial areas. And also Highlands redevelopment areas that we would look to try to designate that are in the preservation area where we could carve out areas of existing development and allow for some further exemption and development there. And again, it's, it's trying to take the tact of the mayor set to work with the Highlands Council to try to promote economic development where we can, in a smart growth way.
Can I just ask, approximately how widespread are these lawsuits? I mean, like, what, Jersey, how many? Obviously, it's only, I mean, is it a boilerplate where they send it out to three quarters of the towns or what, or almost every town gets it?
Rockaway's in it, and Rockspur's in it.
It's not clear because they aren't interesting to my knowledge yet on the program website who got objected to, but my office did twenty plans and we got eighteen instructions. I think that's, it was pretty much almost every person. And I think the two, pretty much, it was forgotten.
They even got the wrong, they even got the names wrong.
Or maybe it just got lost in the mail and it's still coming. I don't know, but they're pretty much, everyone got something, you know, so, yeah, pretty much going to get it the field or the town just in first, I have concerns.
So this, this would just be a legal question, so the attorney, now, if, I thought that was the case, with a blanket boilerplate, they sent it out to all of those. Does each town have to deal with it one-on-one or can there be a consensus of this is a fishing expedition that went out to all these towns?
It's not boilerplate in that, as an litigation starts, we're a community municipality that often do a formal, uh, petition to the courts. We did that and we followed a timeframe up to now. By the end of August, anyone could object, fair share elements that are objected to many municipalities. Some just asked for comments, some asked for the town, and some they asked for immunity to be taken away from municipal buildings. So the report's boilerplate, but it's kind of different. So the next stage is for another adjudicator to be set forth in mediation. So we have to wait.
On those three levels, where are we?
Right in the middle. We don't, community does not ask for immunity and we don't have just comments. So we have certain things that are identified, so we're in the middle right now.
So that's that one. So the other two ordinance is our ones that we've been working on with the land use board. First off, we have the billboard ordinance.
That's all for introduction tonight, Jess.
That's all for introduction tonight, okay, good. And so that one proposes to create regulations for static and multi-messaged billboards to a limited degree in the township. It would permit up to two on Route fifteen north and two on Route fifteen south, and two on Route twenty-three north and two on Route twenty-three south. So only in those locations in what is defined in the ordinance as a gateway, which would be within one mile of where the commercial districts start. So it's a very limited concept to allow for multi-messaging billboards. If you allow for multi-messaging, you also have to allow for static only under these limited circumstances. There are also in addition, there are setback distances between billboards that are required by the DOT. So to the extent that there might be existing ones, that will limit where new ones can go. And in the future, if a new one's placed, it will also limit where other ones can go. So it's meant to be very limited and in gateway locations where people are coming into town. And part of the thought process behind that is that the municipality is allowed to ask for at least one message per loop, so they get like one message for every seven seconds up to a minute, and then they start over again. So at least one message per minute would be a community message. And then also oftentimes, the multi-message boards will allow for the municipality in emergency situations to broadcast messages as well. So it can be a helpful tool for the municipality in terms of providing for emergency messaging or community messaging and to let people know about something that's going on, a community event, and then in case of an emergency, you can get emergency information out quickly. So there's kind of a dual purpose behind that, to allow for that at the gateway locations into sort of like the town center type areas, but only in those areas.
And what is the size and?
The maximum size would be twelve feet by thirty-two feet, which is three hundred and eighty-four square feet with a maximum height of forty feet. And then there's standards about lagging intensity, locations and setbacks, as I said, distance between signs, and then the frequency of messages, which essentially, a lot of that coincides with D O C regulations, as they regulate these.
See, those do not approach that most, right? Because they have to get everything approved.
They have to get it permitted in order to come, to show that they can meet those regulations and then when they, when they get that, they can apply for.
And then we can tax them.
Right, and they would surrender, say, my, and they are also considered a commercial.
It's commercials, right?
Yeah, they would, they would have their tax assessments.
You know, we talked about this last week, this first one, and this one, we had one earlier, you know, Bill, that was, Bill was involved with that question. That was an egress and ingress. This one is very, very extensive, about four pages on legal paper, but the planning board really went over the fine two details on this. So we got this last week.
Months, hours.
That should be container, thank you, Tom.
Yes, we have members of the planning board doing really nice jobs, very, going through this very thoroughly, providing a lot of input and helping us to clarify the standards. And so it is a much better and, you know, more detailed version of what you saw a couple months ago.
Is there enough room on Route twenty-three to have two, a thousand feet apart? I thought we only had like this much.
Probably not. It's just the same standards, but we decided to apply it to twenty-three also in the event that there is a possibility to get up there. We have always, you might be able to get one.
You didn't want to still be doing that.
And similar on Route fifteen, I mean, you may not get up to four because of distance thing and the other standards, you know, you may get one or two, which is, so it's the purpose that the township is looking for. Should be containers. All right, shipping containers. So for that one, shipping containers have become more and more popular to use as storage container on properties. And it's, this is an attempt or proposal to try to regulate them, just in order to keep, you know, limit them in residential districts and then kind of provide some controls for commercial districts as well. We address temporary containers like pods, you know, essentially, those under two hundred square feet are permitted temporarily for thirty to two hundred and eighty days. For residential districts, non-farm assessed, this also went through the land use board and they felt very strongly that farm assessed properties should be able to utilize these in a different way, which makes sense because they're larger property. So under two hundred square feet would, would be permitted. They could be in the rear yards only and they have to follow accessory structure setbacks. We do have a reference in here for essentially all of them that are existing now. There's a reference to non-conformity that they can come in and if they need accessory structure setbacks with the existing container that they have, they can get a non-conforming certificate of non-conformity from the zoning officer. They cannot need accessory structure setbacks or not going to commit that, they're going to move it to where it does need accessory storage setbacks. And then permits would be required for residential districts and then for commercial districts, and they have two or more. So for commercial districts, they also have to need accessory structure setbacks. They have to provide buffering if they're within fifty feet of a residence. One up to forty feet long can be permitted with no permit and then two more with a permit and they have to be either neutral color or match. That's essentially the guidelines. There's a, there's a little bit more in there, but that might add on to the, the idea. And so that's really just to limit them and try to limit the use impact, you're not allowed to stack them, which, you know, people might try to do, which would be dangerous.
Jess, can I just ask a question on the non-conformance? Do they have a limit on trying to apply for that? Like, do they have to do that within six months, a year? And if they don't apply, then they have to go to what exists?
So they have to, yeah, they have to come in within the first year. That's the, the way the municipality saw it set up. So they have a year to come in and get a certificate of non-conformity. If they don't do that, then they would have to come, either get a variance or apply in a conforming way, which is on a permit like everybody else.
And that's what we were going to put in the mayor's newsletter this, to, for the next year, is to update the town of ordinances that have been changed and things like that that have been going on, that we've been changing and things like that. So there is some new things that we've been changing. And that's the best way, you know, other than emailing everybody, you know, is the mayor's newsletter.
Yeah, let people know and that way they can either come in or, you know, they know they need to get a permit when they decide they want to purchase one of these things or something. However, people end up with all these certificates.
Yeah, well, they change.
Yeah, they are.
Still, pods, obviously, they might sit in front of the house for a while and people moving and they're selling their stuff out.
Yeah, but it's like two hundred and eighty days there.
Yeah.
That's the part I wanted to ask. What if it goes over six months? Like, when I was doing my edition, I didn't have a kitchen for seven months. So is there?
I think if you have a reason, when you come up and have a reason for it, it's not, it's for somebody that's just going to keep it in their front yard.
No, I know, but I just want to say, with the review and ordinance, is there, is there supposed to be?
You can allow people, if you want, you could put in, you know, that you could get one extension if you're still moving. I think the idea is just to make sure there's a timeframe because somehow it's temporary or just, oh, it's temporary, you know, two years later, it's still temporary, you know, so.
I just didn't want, you know, necessarily up that was.
Yeah.
Or some people would see that they get a one-term lease on one of these things, that's an older one or whatever. It'd be cheaper if they stored stuff, maybe used storage type of a, right? You can keep it on their own property and pass it to a quicker, but that's a total infringement on the neighbors that have to look at this.
Yeah, that's the balance, he's right, is, you know, people have, like, somebody's storage containers, they need to drive right from, out to.
And then, I apologize, under the four ninety twenty-nine, under five for A and C, one says the permit should be contained must be in the rear yard. And then the A says. And then the A says, you know, it gives, what you can do, like, adjacent to another property as long as you match your house. And so as me reading it, I don't understand why, it looks like there's two different ways you can do it.
So then, it has to be in accessory building area of both requirements of the zone. And then it talks about, this shipping container is in the yard that is adjacent to another residential property or visible, then it has to be screened.
Doesn't say like, that doesn't say on A that it has to be in the rear yard. That's the only thing that, you know.
You could clarify that to just say in the yard or kind of makes it seem like you could put it in the yard.
That interpretation was such a heavy sum I had in touch with.
No, it's good, I mean, everyone kind of sees in different ways of us how these ordinances can be tricky.
Thank you, Jessica, thank you. I think that's what have administrative reports, the mayor and the minister.
Happy to report all Hayden Bigger review has been completed on Miltonside Township. So we're going down on the hotel. DPW is completing the final items related to drainage in the Lake Forest area. And Rothhorn is working on their schedule as we speak, so we should have a schedule known for billing and meeting starting in Lake Forest hopefully next week. But once we get it, we'll let everybody know, but we should have it before the end of the week. H two M is finalizing the final big documents and plans and getting them filed with NJI Bank to get the approval to go out to bid for our most packed well project. Employee training will be conducted on Friday, October third. The municipal building will be closed on that day for the training and then any, then an employee barbecue after the training is complete. And then also, I attended the nine eleven sale, PAC forty-nine does a great job every year and it was great to see all the scouts who participated in the event this year, so.
I just want to piggyback on that, what Deb said, Julie DeSilva and PAC forty-nine and all the scouts that participated, they, you know, I thank them publicly that they do a great job. This nine eleven, that's on township event, we're happy to attend, we're invited to attend. I'm glad they're keeping the memory alive of nine eleven. I think many of our young people, you know, again, caught me up on the twenty-fifth anniversary, so a lot of young people out there don't quite understand. But for those of us that lived through it, you know, it's something we never want to forget. So I really appreciate the work that he does on that and we're happy to support him in that. We have ribbon cutting at the middle school, now, sorry, the Jefferson Township Intermediate School. It would always be the middle school too, as you know. But they welcomed the new fourth and fifth graders to the school. They asked Debbie, myself, our police department, fire department came. They set up a beautiful, they had the ladder set up. Peggy Wiggins spoke to the students on top of the platform, pretty cool. But I give her a lot of credit, she did an awesome job. You know, I know there's a lot of parents out there that are really concerned about sending their kids to a middle school environment, I guess you could say. And she's done a great job to welcome them and, you know, make them inclusive to the school, which is nice. I attended on Friday night the Lake Apakon Museum. And if you've never been there, please go and visit. It's an awesome facility, it's not huge, it's the old gatekeeper's house over at the Apakon State Park. And Marty Kane, who's the president of the Lake Apakon Museum, is, are celebrating, they celebrated their sixteenth anniversary last week, so I was honored to present him with a proclamation. My fellow mayors from Apakon and Roxbury were there. So it was very nice, it's a jam-packed, they're actually putting an addition on the building because it can't house all the displays that they have. So if you really want to know the history of Lake Apakon as a whole and, you know, including Jefferson, Roxbury, Mountain Lake and Apakon, it's definitely worth a visit, go check it out. And if you, whenever went to Burkinabine, as I did with my grandmother as a young lad, it was nickel night back then, still. You know, you get to see a lot of stuff there from Burkinabine, which is pretty cool. Friday night, we have a program for municipal nights, J T Connect. This was previously held at White Rock Lake, it's called Can You See Me Now? Be at six o'clock, well, be at the football game, so the game starts at six on Friday. And it's basically to bring awareness to the plight of opioid addiction. We post banners from those who have passed as a result of opioid addiction. Very moving display, so if you have time to get up there to take a look through, they post them all on the fences and there's just thousands of people. So, so that'll be at the football game. We had boat races this past weekend, then in Apakon State Park. Again, me and fellow mayors went for the opening ceremonies. Again, anything we can do to promote our area, the local economy is always good. And then this coming weekend, even better, because it's mostly in Jefferson, it is in Jefferson, down to the actual, all of it, even though they moved part of it to the main lake. Still primarily in Jefferson. Big boats will be on the lake. I hope they do okay in the woodboard section because it is pretty low. But they'll certainly be flying out in the main lake. And the businesses, I was at the Jefferson House on Sunday night and for dinner with my wife and daughter. And they're very excited that this is going to be right in front of our restaurants and businesses on Lake Apakon, so they're excited about that economic opportunity. So again, anything we can do to promote our local economy will certainly, you know, help to do. I'll be away, I'm leaving vacation Saturday to Saturday. I'll be in North Carolina and you know who, being in charge over here, DJM. Deborah Jane, acting administrator, acting mayor. So that's it, well, I got no speeches tonight.
Okay. Go to the council reports, like, basically, two weeks ago, we started with Mr. Schultz.
So last weekend, I went to our Jefferson Museum over by the firehouse. It used to be our library, the ladies there are getting ready for Christmas and getting the house together for the theme that they're doing in the property together. So if anybody is able to go to the museum, there are just wonderful ladies and the history there is unbelievable and they get all dressed, I don't know, they wear those outfits, it's so hot, I think they had to go out now. So it's a great place to visit if you've never been. Also was at the nine eleven event and I can't believe next year is already going to be twenty-five years. And they said they're really gonna, you know, bring a lot, oh god. They're going to also try to get the young, well, not even more young, but twenty-five years later, the voice scout that built that area there, which will be wonderful. Like the mayor's...
Doug.
Doug, right, yeah. So boat races are this weekend in Lake Apakon and we have, which I'm happy that the businesses are doing, the windless and the J House have hired our police officers to be down there. So hopefully, the craziness of the parking, and we all know down by the windless and the alleys and the J House can get pretty out of control there. So just to keep our residents happy and traffic moving there, I think it was a great idea that those businesses hired our police officers because it's going to be crazy. Over the weekend, I was on the Morris Erie train line in Whippany. And they are really pushing hard to get excursions for our area from Dover to Hackettstown and in Whippany. So because those lines are not being used on the weekends. So it would be a really fun and exciting thing to have for us here that we can go down to Whippany and then do a whole historical train ride. So that was something that ended up being, a couple of our train guys from Jefferson camp were there as well, so it was nice to see the guys I haven't seen in a while. So that was really nice. So that's maybe, hopefully, something exciting that's going to happen soon. And then we also, which I love getting, is from the chief of the Milton First Aid Squad. And I preach all the time that our volunteers, fire department and our ambulance squad are backbone of Jefferson. So just to give an example of August, the squad responded to eighty calls for assistance, twelve calls for medical assistance for the squad, six hundred and forty people hours covering these calls. Squad traveled nineteen hundred and sixty-two miles. There were two thousand two, two thousand two hundred and fifty-four people hours on calls. Twelve people hours covering community events, seventy-eight people hours for mediums and business, eighty-eight people hours training. And they had eleven days with multiple ambulances out at the same time, so.
One organization.
From one, from our Milton side, our Burke side. So, you know, when events come around and trick or treats and fifty-fifties and just anything that they do, just remember, things like this is just absolutely incredible and they do not get paid. So things like this is, I just, every once in a while, I need to read them because they're mind boggling how many hours get put into our town from all our volunteers. And I just think it's so important that we recognize that. And then we also received a letter from Paul from the cannabis for the brain light. And I think we should put that up for discussion about looking into the ordinance and maybe revising it a little bit, because that's when we put the ordinance together for the cannabis, not knowing where it was going to rain and where we were going to be. So we kind of were really tight on things. So maybe we need to look at some suggestions from him because there still is illegal cannabis being sold in Jefferson as a gift. And these guys that came before us, the land use board and everything, spent thousands of dollars to build their business, to get the licenses, to have everything. And I'd really like to do things that are going to make them succeed and not the guys that are doing it illegally, so.
Kind of knew we had to tweak it once it was open.
Yeah, we said we wanted to tweak it, but I just wanted to, right? We need to, I feel terrible that the illegal stuff's still going on, it's just ridiculous.
So, one of the discussion items, this senator just brought up, right, in this meeting on October first. And any other, you know, discussion items that we gave to that list? And just like talking on the First Aid Squad real quick. What amazes me the most is the detail that James put into, important in a month. It's just amazing. And to see the amount of hours and days, eleven days, that there's two rings on the road at the same time just tells you the impact that it's having, to be that busy. And I think what we're seeing is more and more senior citizens are elected to stay in town. So as the population ages, unfortunately, the need for this might be increasing also. And probably, if you looked at your reports from ten years ago, and if it's every poison now, I think you'd see quite a different jump up, but they're sad as people. Okay, Mr. Buddha.
Let's thank him for that, because that makes him out of trouble every single month, they do a good job. Well, you always know that I'm always going to, you know, I'm always going to push the junior women's club of Jefferson. So they're having a five K on October fifth, it's really good game sponsors now, they just need some runners. And you don't have to run, you can walk it. So I challenge you, you sports people, it's five...
Of your way, come along the double way.
You're a boy. More job.
I attended the library, Chuck, you did, what a lovely group of people. They thought that I was the liaison, or they asked me and I said, no, we don't have one, talk to the mayor, so sorry.
Nope, that's you guys.
No, you said that we, that we do the way we do, my thought.
I have a liaison, Carol.
No, I thought that...
Carol Puttiere is my representative.
No, no, but we...
The council does not have a liaison.
Jay always go.
Actually, I live up in alternate with Mr. Doug. And, I mean, how it would be good to communicate when you're going to be going there because there were times where two of us went to the meeting and then the next week, none of us were there. So if you want to be one of the people to communicate with another member and you could both go at the same time, obviously, but it's good to spread, they are... The meetings are always very, as far as we're concerned, very interesting, very interesting.
I don't know, I'm going to go to the next one, they have some ideas, they want to, you know, team up with the town. So I'll hear about that next month, I'll let you know. Eric, you have a piece of paper that I received in the West Milford...
Yes, I got copyrighted.
Which is really cool.
It is.
So, and I know you're always saying that it's hard to get information out and how expensive the newsletter is, that explains all how the taxes are broken down in West Milford.
We do that similarly on our webpage, but we don't post it in our newsletter, but I can.
It doesn't cost any extra stamp, just a paper. So I just thought that would really be interesting.
No, I, Patty Romano, who lives in West Milford, gave me the two thousand four, two thousand five. So it is, it's very good, very detailed and definitely we'll try to...
It's a lot easier.
We'll post what we have on our website, you know, our newsletter as well.
And then my last thing is the governor's debate is on Sunday. So watch it and be nice to the neighbors, that's all, get your popcorn. Yeah, be nice when you're watching it. It's going to be interesting, I think they only have it one week. I think everyone should watch it, the governor's going to say, one of those going to be ours.
It's a bipartisan debate. Mr. Keillor.
Unfortunately, I was late for the nine eleven ceremony, I've gone the last four years, so. Something, I remember that day like yesterday, so. I was disappointed to miss that ceremony, but I heard it was going to be great as usual, which surprises me. Don't want to beat that horse, but I volunteer as well as whoever's lived in this town long knows that. Nobody does it better. The... Pick back on what Bob just said before, you know, I don't want to get into a political thing, but... You know, just this political violence that's going on right now and what happened. I don't know if it moved a lot of people in this room, but it took two days of my life away and, I don't know, it's just really, really hit me in the heart, so. God, just, you know, I pray for all of us that, you know, that we're just safe and just move forward and we can, you know, get over something like this. It's absolutely tragic. Then, another note, I get a call once a week about Natch Road, how it's a battle zone driving on Natch Road. It's like the problem is this and that. But I was told that Natch Road is getting gas next year, so, I don't know. Maybe it's something like Natch Road. I've never gone, I've been there thirty-eight years, I didn't think it was going up there, so we're getting it, so.
Yeah, we were telling my...
Yeah.
There are the processes of getting it permitted as we speak.
Yeah, in fact, I was like, you know, thank you for sending me that website. They responded right away, I said, I'm in.
That would be true.
Yeah, yeah, really exciting, so. So all the people that called me, I said, hey, hey, hey.
But if they're all powerful, certainly let us know when you have...
No, it's not, it's just a battle zone, it's like, you know, you ride up Natch, it needs some TLC, but it's okay. That's it, thank you.
I believe so, I'm pretty sure.
If I know that you said that out, just say no.
It's not passed.
What's the...
October.
October is passed, passed again.
It just continues.
It's Natch Road, they tried to go October.
I think if they're including that as well, no.
Yeah, I think they're...
Because it's going all the way up to the top.
I heard it stopping at Willow Three Natch, or...
Put that in the newsletter.
Thank you.
All goes well, you did your dinner.
Yeah, yeah.
You still live in White Rock and that was one of the first places that they started to bring the natural gas in. And they made sure that at the time, there was a, they surveyed the people and only if a certain number, maybe forty percent, would go down the street. But now, they'll go down the street not asking anybody.
Yeah.
And if they get one out of ten people, they just do, go on to the next street.
And they used to make you...
It's a lot different than they used to be.
They used to make you hook in a heat source. Now they've changed that rule, you could hook in a barbecue.
Oh, really? Well, if we need one, I signed up, I'm good.
They don't need any barbecue?
Okay, there you go, we're good. That was a volunteer on Natch.
Okay, Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, thank you very much, I don't have that much, I've been burning the candle up to the end of life. up to the end of life. Got a few weeks though. I'm, uh, finally settling in. Uh, but I just wanna piggyback something off of Josh said regarding our, our political environment. And, um, you know, I'm just glad, you know, nobody celebrated Robert Kirk's death in, in our town. Cause I've seen some reports in other towns by, you know, teachers and possibly government workers, you know, high profile people. And I'm, I'm just glad it hasn't happened in our town. At least I haven't seen any reports in, uh, you know, I hope, I hope all those people get better. It's just not something. So, if you don't celebrate any of those deaths.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess just to touch on, Councilman Keilish and Schultz. This happened the day before nine eleven. Right on, uh, September tenth. Absolutely horrific to think. It's something that you would expect in a third world nation, especially that Mr. Schultz said that some people are celebrating this, right? But on September eleventh, twenty-four years ago, I think the whole country came together. And, uh, the mourning, disbelief, pretty much shaking their heads a little bit, like a lot of people have happened and did on September tenth. But, um, Charlie Kirk, regardless of people's personal feelings, reached and touched out to actually hundreds of thousands of college students that originally thought that there was only one voice. And he gave them another voice. He gave them a purpose and a reason for moving on. And he also helped and encouraged them during the pandemic when they were isolated and suicide rates were increasing. And they felt like they had no community. And he went to hundreds of college campuses over his tenure period and gave a voice and listened to people who didn't agree with him and knew where they were coming from. And they communicated. And, um, just shocking. And I, I know this is gonna be like another one of those times where people are gonna rally and they're gonna realize that we live in the greatest country in the world and political violence and assassinations are the opposite of the ninety-nine percent of the hearts of Democrats and Republicans. And I hope this brings unity and a sense of, a sense of peace and a sense of belonging, um, sadly as, as, as nine eleven did twenty-four years ago. Speaking of nine eleven, uh, Jimmy Caselba, he's been doing the ceremonies out here by the Veterans Memorial. Actually, since, uh, Donovan, uh, got actually by his daughter and his sister, that's frankly, he put it together in two thousand and twelve. Took a lot of effort, a lot of planning. But Jimmy Caselba's been doing it now since, for almost thirteen years. And, um, had a great turnout, great number of, of voice shows. Um, and it was, it was moving and touching to see the ceremony again. And then again, next year, obviously do the twenty-fifth, uh, standard ceremony on the event. Um, let's see, Berchley Valley Road, I know there's been quite a bit of scum up and people have been talking about by the shopping center, Ridge Road going up from Mira and all the different detours and stuff. Came up at our last meeting and shortly after that, I know there was quite a bit of discussion. The county is doing tremendous work in drainage. If you can remember as I did years ago, the county would, uh, would pay real quick. It's high enough to do. And the, the drainage work that they did so far on, on BBR is going to preserve the road, get the water more off the road. They're paving the area that's got more population and cars than anything except Route fifteen. All the commercial properties, everything that feeds on the BBR, now they're gonna pave from Mira all the way up to the West Milford line, which will be perfect. Perfect drainage, perfect paving. There's gonna be a little bit of a disruption during that part also. And then next year, with the lines that are going in, the natural gas going down the other end of Berchley Valley, they're gonna be able to be offset by New Jersey natural gas the way we were, where they paid for half of the road payment. So, we should have from basically a little south of Casa Bianca all the way to the West Milford line, perfect drainage and paving that, that really stand the test of time. And I hope that people can understand. I know, I know there were a lot of complaints with them. Um, and I guess those three things would be all that I have. All right. We'll move on to Resolution twenty-five-two-sixty-seven authorizing the payment of bills. Comments?
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes. President Berman.
Resolution, nine, resolution authorizing agreement for surveying and engineering services with steward surveying and hearing of a scene for welding road phase two project design. Wait, can we just have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
A second?
I'll dance it.
Good. Comments?
It's for welding road. Um, for doing all the engineering, the surveying, but all we need to get on a map. So, we need all the survey markers and everything.
Trees, drainage.
All of that.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes.
Okay, the resolution, thank you. Twenty-five-two-six-eight, resolution, the township of Jefferson County Board, state of New Jersey authorizing comparative contracting for administration of police departments off duty program. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Question? Comments? Okay, we got it. This is, uh, to change the current format that we use, correct?
No, it's basically, we use a company called OEM right now. We're not very happy with them. We did that through Sourcewell. So, we're going out for RFP to try to get a couple of other companies to bid.
And there are a number of companies that deal.
There's like one or two.
Came true.
That's what I just said.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five-two-seventy, resolution approving current estimate number two, Riverview paving ink for Schoolhouse Road improvement, contract number RDE twenty-five-dash-one. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. This is the second page, second phase correct administrator of what, uh, provided last week. The bulk of this money for paving of Schoolhouse Road was through a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. This is, this is the best of the grant in New Jersey.
Right. That'll probably be another payment once we're final and complete. Cause we have to wait for the cores to come back and everything like that.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes. President Berman.
Yes. Resolution approving current estimate number three, Riverview paving ink, twenty-two-five road paving program contract number RDB twenty-five-dash-three. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes. President Berman.
Yes. Resolution twenty-five-two-seventy-two, resolution appointing police officer Charles Cass as the new main law enforcement officer. Is there a motion?
Second.
Anybody who's seen the, uh, the video, because we realize that, uh, that this is the, uh, the chapter, is, is the right, uh, right, right, uh, handle of this, uh, court. Okay.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes.
Yes. Okay, next to the ordinances, first reading, ordinance twenty-five-seventeen, ordinance amending chapter one-thirty, section, statute municipal code entitled vehicles and transit, more particularly subsection one-third thirty-two-five, entitled scheduled no parking.
Following introduction, the above ordinance will be published in accordance with the law and a public hearing will be held on October first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Comment that I just, uh, last week, so, okay. That's a little public, a few weeks of public.
Oh, wait, I have a question. Cause I was, I went, I drove over there. Cause, you know, cause I'm not familiar with that road, which is fine. But then I noticed that there is a business across the street. So, what would it entail to get a crosswalk? Cause we all know, as the gentleman said, if you can't park in one spot, you're gonna park in the other.
They just park across the street already.
Right. I know. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we have to go over Charlie's liquor license. That's one of the things that we have to put together with them.
But for a crosswalk?
Just state, state highway. We'd have to get a approval from the state.
Well, she's, that's where people are patron park. So, some of it's, uh, totally.
Yeah, I don't know. I know, I was, I was thinking, like, except for parking on, on, if they have that, um, the rest of, they have parking on one side. Yeah. So, you cross one. You watch those boys dart those one who were.
That's another very good thing. That's the difference between the two roads there.
Oh, that's on both, on both sides.
On twenty-three.
Yeah, they park next to the gas station and they have, that's, that's.
They run across the highway.
Yeah, they have, that's part of the process. That's a part of the, uh, easement. Cause that's what.
No, the police park, what you're talking about.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying. So, when I was sitting there, that's the first thing to think of. You let anybody who just parked across the street and dart. And when you go to, you know, when you go out, you go out at night time. You know, another month this is gonna be dark. I mean, I know you know it. I just don't know what it entails at all.
So, not be able to tell. Instead of that, what she has, definitely. Maybe it's, uh, smart on our part.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, exactly. We don't ever want to say.
You don't, you don't wanna, you don't wanna alleviate one problem and have something that's a unforeseen consequence. You know, it's good that you brought that up. Thank you. Any other comments?
And just for the public's, I know it's pretty early here for the last meeting, but our traffic officer was at the last meeting who explained this and this was the recommendation from our traffic officer. Charlie, thanks.
And again, this is something that we can revise, redo. We just need something, not just.
It was really to clear out the intersection.
Yes.
Okay, well, roll call please.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes. President Berman.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-five-eighteen, ordinance amending the code of Jefferson, township Jefferson to revise various sections of chapter four-ninety, um. We have, we have all this stuff. So, next, next, in two weeks, if anybody from the public would be interested, looking at legal, okay, looking at pages of legal. Okay. Please. Second. Okay.
Following introduction, the above ordinance will be published in accordance with the law and a public hearing will be held on November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, according to a referral to the Land Use Board.
Thank you. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes. President Berman.
Yes. Okay, introduce. Now we have the minutes to the, uh, September third, twenty-twenty-five. And I, I just wanna comment that I look at the minutes, uh, this morning, and they are very, very detailed, very, very clear. That makes me, uh, almost wanna say that maybe isn't necessary if you have minutes that detailed to have the meetings bigger. I would just say it now. I've been discussing that since I first began, but, uh, very good.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes.
Yes. Next, we have the consent agenda that has nine items, twenty-five-two-seventy-three to twenty-five-two-eight-one.
Matters listed on the consent agenda resolution are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion of the council and one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed for consideration.
Okay, everybody's looked at the nine consent agenda items, resolution, everybody's good?
There's a motion?
Motion. Second. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Burda, yes. Mr. Schultz, yes. Mrs. Senator, yes. Vice President Haile, yes.
Yes. Next we'll have the public comments section. Please state and spell your name to the record. Each speaker is limited to one comment in no more than five minutes. Floor is open.
I'm gonna just comment all night.
I don't know.
I'll come back. Can you fit again, one's putting to the spin on the like platform? So, talking about the videotaping at the minute, um, I'm asking the mayor, is there anybody who can really get somebody that really does it like a job and, 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 and the website instead of people, like personal people doing it and then picking and choosing what's on there and what's not.
So, they, it's a council decision. So, they're coming up with different solutions.
So, I was gonna bring up to the council tonight, since we can do this right now, uh, we have the ability to do the audio at least right now. I think we should start posting the audio and then, um, then we can dabble into the video cause that's more complex. And I really would like our, um, you know, guys to come here to explain to us, you know, the money, the differences and stuff. But the audio we can do right now. We can post that right now on it.
And the town, the town board did give some suggestions.
Yeah. So, we have something to look at here. That's why. So, right now, uh, audio, option one that we have for our stuff, we can do this week for this meeting right now.
That would be wonderful.
Right. So, I'm gonna ask the council, we don't have to, you know.
But they'll figure it out.
And then, and then video, right. Yeah. But at least we can have the audio and, um, and that can be with each meeting. Cause we have that.
I understand. It's just that, that it seems like some things are posted, some things aren't.
Right. The last meeting was not posted.
And, and last meeting, from what I understand, was very, um, humid. But I have another question from the mayor. So, what happened with the township with this legal thing? That was very embarrassing for the township. Okay? And not only for here, but you know, you know, I, I took care of EDC and it was talked about at the Rock Star meeting and the Rock Way. Like, so what happens from here? Just like any other legal thing, can the township go after these people for the thirty-some odd thousand dollars that was lost?
That's a legal question. Probably not, I would guess, since it was dismissed.
But I know that there's another woman in town that's going through a big legal thing and she's just going after the person who. thing, and she's just going after the person who, well, that's saying against her, and wanted not thirty thousand dollars, but.
Certainly, certainly something we can explore.
Because we were looking for fifty thousand dollars with Melissa to bring our taxes down at one point, that's more than half of what we needed to bring our taxes down for the whole township by one point, and now we're wasting it this way, that's all it is.
I would be so disappointed.
If you could get over there, Joe. In Florida, I actually had a video, but I didn't play.
I would be so disappointed.
You know, things, you have to see what we're talking about, and I would, John, sir, from the back, um, first thing I just want to say is that, you know, no matter how good your minutes are, it's about the time, and, and as the mayor pointed out, for instance, you know, something happened the last meeting, but until the minister approves, you know, after this meeting, shows two minutes of meetings behind, particularly tough in the way the higher commission, but, you know, even here, it's, it's, it's something, so, you know, one of the great things you do also is, is once you have that recording out there, you know, there's AI that will transcribe it, there's even AI that will do podcasts, and actually do a very nice discussion summary.
Yeah, I want to see myself in IA, in IA world.
It, it, it's really, IA world, whatever. Um, the other thing I just want to note is that, you know, I, I wanted to wait till I, you know, came to you, or at least, you know, public, somebody who also has some of the same concerns about what's going on with the report and the chemicals, and it may just, it may just mean about communication, you know, maybe this is a great idea, but until the public gets their hearless plan and discuss it and get the details, I mean, well, like you got the information published that they were doing, in April or May, they published their plans in the summer, and they said they were doing something in some areas, but they didn't say where they were, which ones, and which chemicals, and in fact, they said in their earlier write-up that they were going to be killing the algae and then using some product, they're not killing the algae, they're actually just starting the algae, takes a year to kill it, but what they use now, so they're not doing exactly what they said they were doing, and that's why we need to, and if they're shocking of doing other chemicals, then we haven't heard about that yet either, so, there, we should just be aware what's happening, they, you know, I just want to make sure people realize, when, when the red tide, or not red tide, when you have the problem you had years ago with the cyanobacteria, it hurt a lot of people, but, you know, the scientists had the data that I'm, that I'm talking about, but we didn't, and at the end of the season, when they published the data, the cyanobacteria levels were lower, in the summer, we shut down, then the summer before, when no one had any complaints, that's the kind of stuff why I say, no, I really mind bullet picks, because I don't want to see us where, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's good to solve problems, but I'd rather just avoid the problems. Thank you, thank you.
Mike White, okay, H W eighteen-one, of the thirteen Crescent Drive, um, I done a little research since our last meeting, and first I want to commend the mayor, uh, five pages about a lawsuit that we all didn't have the details about, now we have a lot more details than we did, so, I know it wasn't easy for him to do that, but I do commend the board for doing that, so thank you. Then also, uh, Mr. Kaylich, he was some things to like, and since I've done a little research, I can add that the town has code of ethics and, um, that you're all obligated to follow, and some of the things I would like at the last meeting, uh, leads me to believe that somebody violated those code, those codes, and if that did happen, I would expect you as a board to investigate that, on behalf of the taxpayers of Jefferson, to look into that, find out if there's any validity to it, and then, you know, pursue it further, because if somebody's representing me as a taxpayer, and they're violating the code of ethics that they signed on for, I've got a problem with that, so I, I appreciate you bringing that to light, because I know that wasn't easy for you, but I do appreciate it, and I think as taxpayers, a lot of us would like to see that pursued, if it either is any validity. Thank you.
Okay, the floor is open. Okay. Um, I would like to just comment, was closed on the last comment that was presented, um, the issue arose two weeks ago, um, it was the first that I had heard about, it's fine, I'm glad that it actually arose, because what was brought up in the email was something that the council voted on, on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, so that would have been a public document at that point of time, all right, and the email that came from the administrator that only had, didn't have a contract, that only had a memorandum of understanding, um, she wrote in the email that the attached, uh, are three signed MOAs, they are not public until after action is taken tonight at the council meeting, okay? For three months, we had members of the public, we had a council member, and we had a member of, of, a press, a person from the press, that was sending over a request, asking for the document that the council voted on on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, okay? I was accused of handing out confidential information that should have been available on December nineteenth of the previous year, that the council voted for, I'm glad that I provided that public information, because sometimes the public has difficulty getting a hand on public information. I want to say one thing, this administration is different than the previous two administrations, and two mayors, and three administrators that I dealt with, they, every time there was an agreement, or somebody was given additional monies above and beyond within the contract, for whatever reason it might be, all the council members were immediately provided that document, we're talking about twenty, or twenty-five years of never a question, never an issue, there is, for some reason, this administration has decided that it's not the council's party, even though they always say, the council's the one that makes the budget, the council's the one that approves all this stuff, but you don't have a right to see it, okay? I'd like to ask the administration, why is your administration different than the previous two administrations and three administrators, I know you're gonna have a good answer, I'd like to hear, why, why does the town council have to offer, and have they had to offer at least five or six years now, documents that should be published?
Personnel matters are administrative function as per township code, township code says I have to notify you of personnel actions, you receive a personnel order every time there is a promotion, a resignation, a, uh, uh, retirement, that's what is in the code, and that is what I'm providing to the council, you get in your budget documents all the salaries for every employee of this township, that you are free to review, not my rules when it comes to a personal action form, that has to be opened, it contains personal information that should not go out through an email or through, uh, regular documents with personal information in it, so that is the reason why when I became, you asked me for a question, I'm giving, I'm, I'm answering your question, that is why you are getting a personal order, I am following the township ordinance, you are, you're not entitled to the personal action forms that are used as administrative function for the personnel, which I am in charge of, that is run through my administrator, as administrative function in this township, get to know the code, Mr. Birmingham, and you'll understand why it's done that way, I can't explain why for twenty-five years it was done differently, but that was not the way it should have been done, you're not entitled to that information, it's a, it's an administrative function, I am following the ordinance, as you always, as you always state, you want council to follow, I am following the ordinance, change the ordinance if you want to.
Personal on that, there's no social security number, there's, whatever might be personal on that, you can easily.
I would just confirm, you can, you can spin it any way you want, it's a personal action form, it is not something that the council's entitled to get, it's used for administrative function, which I am in charge of, you are not.
And we're in charge of the budget, Mr. Birmingham?
You are in charge of the budget, absolutely, and you get a sap, you get, you get a budget of all the salaries of every employee in this township, it's in your budget book, every single person is listed with their salary posted, so you have that information.
You, you don't, you don't want to do like the previous administrations.
No, I don't, I want to follow the ordinance, I want to follow the laws, you always, from that day, you always want to make sure we're following the ordinances, I'm following the ordinance.
You're interpreting something.
Oh, you want me to read it? I'll, I'll pull it up for you right now.
We could easily make a resolution.
You can, and you can change the ordinance.
And ask that.
Still, still administrative function.
The pass is just.
Learn what our form of government is, strong mayor, we council, okay?
Strong mayor's right, that's.
I am in charge of administration, I am in charge of personnel, not the council.
Okay, well, that's.
Learn our form of government, Mr. Birmingham.
Okay, so, let me see here now.
Read the ordinance.
All right, that, that, that's, you're, you're correct, so anytime we want it, we have to just keep sending over requests.
That's, that's the way the law is, Mr. Birmingham, it's a, it's a personal action form, used for administration, not for dissemination. And if you want it as a public document, I'm sorry, that's the law, you have to request it.
Let, let's go back to the initial, let's go back to the initial issues.
My, my, my five minutes, I'm going, I didn't use my.
You're making, you're making.
I understand, but you also rebutted some of the things I said.
I, I rebutted.
Well, the only thing I wanted to add to that, Bob, is that if you don't have an issue with what Josh said, brought to the forefront of the public at the last meeting, then you would have no problem with an investigation, to whether you actually did or did not, so you could be found innocent, as well as the opposite, it could be that's what happened, so if you said you did what you did, and you don't have a problem with the investigation, because you feel as though you were on the right, and you did not violate the code of ethics, then there should be no problem with that, that's what I, thank you.
Thank you, the second.
Yep.
Okay, I have no problem with an investigation, in fact, I welcome what was brought up two weeks ago, okay, because I provided a public document to a member of the public and to a council member who was trying to get that public document for three months, okay, if I'm guilty of that, that's fine, but what I would like to do from the administration is find out exactly why the contract was voted on, okay, on December eighteenth, and I'm glad we had, I'm glad this was brought up, because maybe now we can have an investigation and figure out all the things, okay, we, we, I'm looking at the, um, the agenda and the minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, under the agreement for the contract, okay, and it says that, uh, for, for twenty-four, uh, three-twenty, um, you, on the whereas, of whereas, and this went to the public, and this the council voted on, and this is approved, and is approved by the township labor council, and is fully incorporated in terms of the memorandum of understanding, okay, the contract, the agreement was done, other years, but I know, Mr. Mayor, you do things differently than other administrations.
I follow, I follow the rules.
Well, this, this was a contract that was voted on by the council on December eighteenth, I know, and the most important part of the.
Memorandum of understanding was voted on, not.
No, 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 that's not what it says, that's not what it says. Well, okay, what I, what I would like to do, I make a motion and, and ask the administration to explain why that resolution, that, those contracts were voted on on December eighteenth, and it says in there, and tax, it's what the public sees, this is what the voter.
It was the MOA.
Oh, wait.
The MOA was.
Memorandum of understanding.
I think, I, no, the contract.
Contract was not approved.
There was no, the memorandum of understanding.
The contract is not going to approve.
Because it got the MOA approved before the final contract was all finalized.
And there was wording issues that had to be negotiated.
There was no wording, exactly what's in the memorandum of understanding goes into the contract.
There's other wording issues that had to be negotiated with the union.
I checked, nothing else had to be, the agreement, the way it's, the agreement is the union and the administration come to terms, once they come to terms, you have the memorandum of understanding, I checked in two thousand and fourteen, the contract was done at the same time the memorandum of understanding was done.
Okay.
It's a simple process, you put those changes into a word document, which is the existing contract.
Okay.
The contract in two thousand and fourteen was available to the council.
Sorry, it wasn't done that way in two thousand?
And to the public.
Twenty-four, sorry.
A week later, a week later, not, not over three months later, so I would like an explanation as to why the contract in MOU were voted on and approved, approved by the labor attorney on two thousand and eighteen, and the public, the public and a council member and the press were not able to get a hold of it for over three months.
Because there was not a signed contract.
There was no signed.
Till I executed, Mr. Birmingham, it is not an official signed contract.
Okay, I, I, I make a motion that we ask exactly why.
Absolutely, I will have a full explanation, you, at the next meeting, Birmingham, you got it.
And the administration.
Not a problem.
Okay, can we, can we read that?
Absolutely.
Because this is what, this is what the problem was, you have the council member. Uh, you know what, we need to have on the next, next meeting agenda, this, an explanation as to why it took over three months.
Absolutely, you got it.
And, and an explanation to try to figure out this litigation, right, is, was it frivolous? What was involved in it, I see, I talked to an attorney from town.
You're opening up a can of worms there, Mr. Birmingham.
An attorney that lives in town that said that it wasn't frivolous, something was put onto the website that said it wasn't, you can, you can clap like that.
You, you are opening a can of worms, Mr. Birmingham, be very careful.
It just got brought up.
So it sounds like it was in discussion for the next month meeting?
Yeah, 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 uh, with an explanation as to the time that it takes over three months to become a public document.
Oh, still, you made, you made your point, why don't we just, she said he's gonna do it, and she's gonna put it in the next minute, so let's just start it.
Why it have to be voted on, but it's still being negotiated?
Okay, so it wasn't being negotiated, they were looking at the document, making grammatical changes, every time we went back with a new draft, there was another grammatical change, that's all it was, but I gotta give the unions all the credit, because they double-checked their documents before they sign them, that's what took the three months, was going back and forth with the grammatical changes.
And so, when you say that.
You have a problem with that, then some of the unions are not gonna let them cut their.
You say that under the tax, that was the public, I guess, under the tax, three months later, I'll look at the wording of that resolution.
The labor attorney prepared the memo of self-understanding, he also prepared, he had the draft contracts, they were not finalized until the unions signed them, they signed the MOAs, which gave us the ability to ratify the contracts, so we could get everything in place into the contracts.
The process in the past.
And we've done that with the last time, I see it too.
The process in the past is that the union negotiates with the town, the union town comes to an agreement.
The town council used to negotiate, which is highly improper, council members run a negotiating committee, I stopped that.
The union signs the contract, then the MO, the.
You didn't have a problem with that back then, did you, Mr. Birmingham?
The MOU had signed before the contract.
The meaning of the minds, the meaning of the minds, the administration, and the union, the union agrees.
Bob, can we please move on? Can we please move on?
Nobody knows that, waiting to down.
Can we please move on? Can we please move on?
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll ask for that, we'll get it next minute.
Can we please move on?
Do you have comments?
Yeah, I have a second session.
Okay. So we have.
Resolution number twenty-five dash two eighty-two, regulations providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NHS A ten, full and four, dash twelve, matters relating litigation, negotiations, and the attorney client, for verbal housing litigation.
Okay.
We're not voting on anything when we get back, so we're coming back and just kind of saying we're out of here, so, you don't need to hang out and wait for us if you don't want to, because we're basically coming back and saying we're done, so there's nothing to say, we're done, so who knows how long this will take, so, just so people know.
Why don't you say you want more of the moment?
We're moving on, okay.
Can we, their motion, their motion, can we?
Motion.
Second. Roll call please.
Gura, yes, Mr. Schultz, Mrs. Centaur, yes, Vice President Taylor.
Oh, wow, why did we?
It was going good till the end there.
Yes, you have, how you feeling?
I'm far so good.
Yeah.
I go for my check though.